The Board of County Commissioners meeting will convene February 6, 2024. If we could rise for the invocation by Bill Tang.
Let us pray. Our gracious and merciful God, as we continue to travel into this new year, we thank you for your watchful care over us. We are grateful for your everlasting arms that have supported us in our work and strengthened us for the journey into the year ahead. It's our prayer that you lead us forward to serve you more perfectly, that we may achieve what is best for our nation and for this county, and that which advances the kingdom of righteousness, justice, and truth. And we also pray that you bless and hold dear those who have been elected to hold office in the government of this county, especially our commissioners, that they may do their work in a spirit of wisdom, kindness, and justice. Help them use their authority to serve faithfully and to promote the general welfare that they may create here in Lee County, a community of justice and peace where your will may be done for thine to the kingdom and the power and the glory forever. Amen.
Return to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, in two or three colors, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no end, et non est.
Thank you all. I am Kevin Ruane. I'm the vice chair, and I'm sitting in Mike Greenwell's chair, but I'm Kevin Ruane. Next item on the agenda is ceremonial presentations. I'll turn over to Commissioner Pendigress.
Good morning. Thank you. If I could have Karen and Pablo come up. We have a special guest in the house this morning, and I think she found some friends back. This is Tina. Tina is six months old. She's a little hound, rottweiler mix, and she's looking for a good home. She would be a great pet for someone. And we had some great events going on this month at Animal Services with Valentine's coming up. So Karen, can you tell us about that a little bit?
Absolutely. We invite everybody to come on out and fall in love at Animal Services for just $14 adoption fee with your approved application. And as always, our cats and kittens are adopt one, get a feline friend at no additional charge. Of course, we have bunnies and everything else, too. Tina is available. Like you said, she's six months old, and she is great. I have taken her to an event, loves kids. So if you have kids, I highly recommend Tina for that. We also have our vaccine clinic in Benita at Benita Springs Library on Thursday, nine until one. Vaccines are free. Microchip is free. If you don't have your pet microchip, please do that. Next month is that in Pine Manor. So once a month, we will have vaccine clinics. So keep an eye on our Facebook page and on our website. We will post them as we schedule them every month. So come on out and adopt. If you don't have Valentine, we'll hook you up.
We have a lot of right now, a lot of animals in stock right now.
Yes, we do. So this time last year, we probably had about 20 dogs on the adoption floor, and now we have 60, so.
We get a lot of runovers from Christmas cats and dogs?
We believe it's actually we're seeing the effects of Ian at this point because people are moving because of the rent or they can't get back into their homes. So now we're seeing that. Yep.
Okay, well, thank you for everything you do, and hopefully Tina find a good home.
Thanks.
Goodbye, Tina.
She's very interested.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pendigress. Next item for ceremonial presentations are obviously from Commissioner Sandelli, Lee Health Military Support Program. Sir?
Good morning, and thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I'm honored to read this. If there's anybody here that's here for this resolution, any of the volunteers, you're welcome to come up as a representative. I'll read this, and then we'll take a picture. We're not coming up. Morning, Mike.
Morning, Ken.
Good morning.
Morning.
Okay. Whereas we, the community members proudly acknowledge you on wavering dedication and sacrifices of our local service members and their families, as well as our esteemed veterans. And whereas a team of over 15 volunteers with heartfelt commitment stands united to support uplift our military community during deployments and beyond. And whereas these dedicated volunteers actively engage in supporting veterans by offering referral assistance with various organizations such as Lee County's Health Human Services, United Ways, Mission United, Red Cross, American Legion Posts, VFW Posts, Home Based Veterans, Family Care, and more. And whereas the volunteer team diligently looks to ensure that vulnerable veterans and their widows receive the benefits and resources they need, leaving no room for them to fall between the cracks. Whereas for the past two decades, this remarkable team has sent 125,000 pounds of care, boxes for our local service members deployed overseas, supporting over 2,300 local men and women in the military. And whereas the team actively participates in the VA food pantry, extending their outreach by attending twice a month to provide essential items needed by the clients of VA clinic. Whereas the collaborative efforts of Lee Health, the American Red Cross, United Ways, Mission United, the Home Based Veteran Family Care have resulted in the creation of the Veterans Visitation Program at Cape Coral Hospital, setting an inspiring example as the first program of its kind in a civilian hospital. And whereas teams' commitment extends beyond the local hospital's visits and encompassing activities such as organizing suite support for the military with the Florida Everblades promoting the Collier Lee Honor Flight, assisting returning veterans, their families with community resources through United Way and Mission United, and actively participating in fundraisers for the Military Support Program during the holidays. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Lee County, Florida, expresses our deepest gratitude and appreciation for the selfless efforts of these dedicated volunteers. Their commitment to supporting our military and veteran community is a testament of the strength and compassion that binds us together. We acknowledge and commend your outstanding contributions for shaping a community where service members, veterans, and their families are valued, supported, and never forgotten. Executed the sixth day of February 2020 by the Board of County Commissioners and signed by our chairman, Mike Greenwell. Thank you very much.
Someone want to speak? Someone want to speak?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sandelli, for your service. We are grateful. I just wanted to say that if it wasn't for our veterans and our supporters, we would never have gotten past year number one. We thought it was just going to be over and done, and we would be done. But 20 years later, here we are. And we, the local young men and women come back here to Lee County, and they're able to get jobs. And now we're working on the next generation, and it's been wonderful. So thank you. Thank you very much for your support.
Much to these days. Thank you.
Very much. Appreciate it very much. Look at the recap. There's no action that we need to take, obviously, at this point in time so we can move on to the consent agenda. Commissioner Hammond, any items to pull?
No items, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Pendigress?
None to pull, but I do want to recognize item number 32, 33, and 34, the improvements of the monetary value we put into Lee High Acres. This is a continued effort for the Board of County Commissioners.
Commissioner Sandelli? I don't have any items either. Move the balance.
I'll second it, Mr. Chair.
I have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Pendigress, a second by Commissioner Hammond. I now will turn to public comment. I have a call from Marsha Ellis.
I'm going to apologize for the quality of the map. My printer is not functioning at its highest right now. My name is Marsha Ellis, for the record, and I have concerns regarding three consent items, number six, number 12, and number 28. First of all, with number six, the land development code quote unquote cleanup, I just request that the versioning be made available, strike-throughs and deletions brought forward so that the public can evaluate those changes as suggested in the table accompanying the item. And then I'm going to say with number 28 on the biosolids, there is some confusion around the path of biosolids in Lee County and exactly what's happening to them if some of them are being kiln-dried, et cetera, and what it means to be a Class A biosolid. So I'm seeking some clarification about that process. And then number 12 on the easements related to the Alaco Road Extension and development that's taking place there. In particular, the item that is on the Western Slough. This parcel looks like it is being used in part to satisfy some other lands being taken out of conservation easement. And it seems to me like we're using the same scoop of ice cream on the cone, in the sundae, and on the banana split. And so this parcel has been committed to conservation easement for a long time, going back to 2015, registered with Army Corps of Engineers. And it's those commitments to this parcel on this slough. This is a sensitive area where we have enormous amounts of surface water moving through into neighborhoods, into Wild Blue, flowing into the Astero and the Imperial Basins. And this commitment is not being upheld. Instead, it looks like that it's being parsed up and re-served at will to meet requirements for the environment, when in the end we're having a degrading of the natural function of this very important slough. So I'm calling attention to that because I don't think that what I see up here aligns with what I've been told in comprehensive plan amendments and zoning hearings and in the literature that I've reviewed extensively related to this parcel. So I am pointing out that there are significant problems with what is being brought forward that are going to create issues in the future. And I just ask that it be reconsidered. Thank you.
Ms. Ellis, do I have any other public comments on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Any other discussion amongst the commissioners? Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Let's move on to the administrative agenda. County manager?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Item number one is to authorize submission of planning project applications for CDBGDR funding, and I'd like to ask Mr. Sayo to present the item.
Good morning, commissioners. We are asking you to authorize the planning applications that you see on the screen in front of you. One is a regional alternative source water supply study that focuses on Lee High Acres, a public safety community wildfire prevention plan. Community Development would like to proffer a strategic growth master plan. The Captiva Planning Panel has, or Community Panel, rather, has asked for a stormwater study. And the last one, I need to explain for a second. With the CDBGDR program, we ultimately will probably receive some program income related to the housing projects. When we do, that money could be repurposed into revolving loan funds for additional housing development. But we need a revolving loan fund and a mechanism to support that. And this study proposes to give us a feasibility analysis for that.
Any questions? Move the item.
I'll second.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner Pendigress, a second by Commissioner Hammond. Any public comment?
Marsha Ellis, for the record. I'm happy to see that there's a study available. I would just like to know what consultants, who's going to be running that study, and make sure that there's an opportunity to review it by the public to evaluate it, just because it is so important with the density reduction groundwater resources and that those are managed. I have been reading lately about inducing recharge, and that doesn't follow the literature in terms of what does actually recharge our aquifer. And I'm concerned about some deviations in policy so that we can truly enact a plan that is going to protect existing users of domestic water supply, public supply going forward with proven science-based policy.
I'll see to an answer to your question. Any other public comment on item number one? Okay, we'll come back to commission. Any other discussion? I have a motion, a second on the floor. Anyone opposed? No one opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number two.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. This is to approve the process to refinance tourist development tax revenue bonds, and I'd like to ask Mr. Winton to present the item.
Good morning, commissioners. Agenda items two, three, and four can be taken together. These are all bond refinancings. The, so because of bond rates right now, we can realize some savings. These bonds recently became callable or will be callable, meaning you can pay them off and then reissue new bonds. We do that to term. We do not add years to our bond refinancings. The water and sewer revenue bonds and the tourist tax development bond, revenue bonds, those became eligible for refinancing, and they were callable after October 1, 2023. The transportation facilities bonds will be eligible after October 1, 2024. And we expect savings on all of these based on the bond market. For the transportation facilities bonds, if we do complete that deal prior to October 1, 2024, we will put that refinancing into escrow until October 1.
Thank you, Pete. Any questions for Pete? Just for the record, just for clarification, it's really important that we're doing exactly what you're doing, but most bonds do have prepayment penalties associated with them. When they're callable is the opportunity when you could refinance them. So the refinancing mechanism really is allowed only when they are callable or when they have exceeded a period of time where you don't incur a prepayment penalty. I just think that's important in the environments. Some people have questioned, did we wait too long? We can only do it, obviously, when they're callable. So just for the record. But thank you very much. Any other questions?
I move items two, three, and four.
I have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Pendigress, a second by Commissioner Sandelli on two, three, and four. Any other discussion? Anyone opposed? Item passes unanimously. Oh, sorry. Any public comment on two, three, and four? My bad. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Now, obviously, you have a motion, a second, no one opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Item number five.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. This is the Ward of Contract Ortiz Widening Colonial to MLK, and I'd like to ask Rob Price to present the item.
Good morning, commissioners. Admin item number five is to award a contract to OHLA, Inc. for the widening of Ortiz Avenue from just north of Colonial Boulevard to Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard in the amount of just under $31 million. The project consists of widening Ortiz to four lanes with new bicycle and pedestrian amenities, drainage improvements, utility improvements for both the city of Fort Myers and LCU, and modifications to the parking lot at the jail facility, Lee County Jail Facility. We anticipate construction beginning in the spring, and it is expected to take two years to complete. FDOT's currently constructing improvements to Colonial Boulevard in the area of the project. There are specific project notes requiring coordination with FDOT. And after talks with OHLA, they plan to start construction to the north and work their way south to Colonial Boulevard. FDOT should be out of the way by the end of this year at the intersection of Ortiz and Colonial. Here for any questions?
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I may on that one. So just, I know a lot of people, as they'll drive through the area, you know, they'll say, oh, gosh, they just redid this intersection at Colonial. Are we going to make sure that we've coordinated so that we don't have to undo any work that's already been done? I mean, I think people worry about, did they waste taxpayer dollars by having to do it once and then redo it a second time?
Yes, sir. Our project limits are actually ending north of the Colonial intersection. When the state builds the continuous flow intersection there and they complete it this year, we're just basically paving up to the limits where FDOT stopped.
Excellent. So we'll connect to their improvements.
Correct.
Thanks. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
How about the roundabout that's already constructed now? That's going to stay as it is?
Stay as it is. Yes, sir. We're not touching the roundabout.
Okay, thank you.
One more question, Rob. You're starting from MLK and working south, is that correct?
That's correct.
Great, thank you.
Another question?
I move the item.
Second.
For a second. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Any other discussion amongst the commissioners? Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item, county manager?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. The next items, six to eight, are hurricane recovery items, with number six being accept hurricane relief assistant funds from U.S. Tennis Association, Florida Section Foundation. And I'd like to ask Mr. Young to present the item.
Good morning, commissioners. Mackeyon, Lee County Parks and Recreation. Item number six is to accept the hurricane relief assistant funding from the United States Tennis Association Foundation, the Florida section, in an amount of $70,000 for tennis courts repairs at Phillips Community Park, Walker Hatch Community Park, Kirk Dunison, and also Rutenberg Community Park.
Any questions?
I'll move approval, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Hammond, a second by Commissioner Sandelli. Any public comment? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Any other discussion amongst the commissioners? Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item, Mr. County Manager?
Thank you. And number seven is to adopt a resolution approving Fort Myers Beach Water Reclamation Facility Master Plan, and I'd like to ask Ms. Keys to present the item.
Good morning, commissioners. Item seven and eight are to support our Fort Myers Beach Water Reclamation Facility rehabilitation and capacity improvements. This item is to adopt a resolution approving our master plan for the improvements. The master plan is required by the Florida Department of Environmental Protection for state revolving fund loans. We will be applying for these loans, and the amount of the applications will depend on the construction costs. We're also looking at other forms to fund this project, but for today, this will keep us in the application process for revolving loan and forgiveness loans.
Any questions?
I move the item.
Motion, a second on the floor. Public comment? I'll close the public comment. As I don't see any, any other discussion. Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Number eight.
Thank you. This is the Ward of Professional Services Contract for Fort Myers Beach Water Reclamation Facility, and I'd like to ask Ms. Keys to present the item.
Today, we are asking for a ward of a competitively negotiated contract for professional services for the Fort Myers Beach Water Reclamation Facility. The goal of the project is not only to increase capacity for future population demands, but also to include advanced treatment upgrades, which will increase our water quality by reducing nutrients. We sustain damages during Hurricane Ian, so we are also using that data for hardening our facilities and also dealing with future flooding. The construction, we anticipate to begin in 2025 with a completion in 2028.
Questions?
I still have one question. The amount that was here is included in the overall number in item seven. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions? I'll move the item. Motion by Commissioner Sandelli.
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Hammond. I think it's important to note, obviously, that this project is one that we're going to have to go out and bond. This was an item that we addressed in our legislative priorities. It's also an item that we're going to continue to, obviously, advocate for. It's unfortunate that the storm certainly created another item that we had to deal with a little prematurely. So with that in mind, any other public comments? Close the public comments. We have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. And that should conclude our items under administrative agenda. Public hearing.
Good morning, commissioners. David Halverson, County Attorney's Office, in this morning. This item has been duly advertised. I provided an affidavit publication with the clerk. Item one is a petition to vacate the public's interest in a portion of an unimproved 50-foot-wide platted right-of-way located along the southerly lot line of 14240 River Road and Fort Myers. There were no objections to the requested vacation, and all head property owners have been notified. If there's any questions, staff's available.
Any questions?
Move the item.
Second.
A motion, a second on the floor. Any public comment on public item number one? Seeing none, I'll close it. Bring it back to the commission. Any other discussion? Any objection? Motion carries unanimously. Item number two.
Good morning, commissioners. Joe Adams of the County Attorney's Office. This hearing has been properly advertised. I have the affidavit publication for your clerk. This is an ordinance incorporating the approved CIP or capital improvement program into the Lee Plan. This is being done in accordance with Chapter 163 of the Florida statutes. So any questions, have to answer them.
Any questions?
I move the item.
Motion on the floor, a second by Commissioner Hammond, first by Commissioner Pendigress. Any public comment? No public comment on item number two. I'll close public comment. Any other discussion from Commissioners? No objections. Motion carries unanimously. We'll now move on to Commissioner carry on items, work on items and carryovers. We'll start in order as presented on the agenda. Commissioner Sandelli.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. You know, the freedoms that we enjoy today as Americans are provided by those who have served in our armed forces. Many, as you all know, have given all. There are several groups, and we mentioned some before, who continue to dedicate their time and resources to helping our veterans and their families with ongoing issues. The needs are many, from housing to health care to transition back to civilian life. What our veterans bring is integrity, commitment, and variety of skills as they continue to serve, core values on which we all can build on. As a veteran, and as were many in my family, I would like to seek your support to have staff draft a resolution reestablishing the Lee County Veterans Advisory Council and bring it back to the Board for approval at a later date. The goal of the council will be to actively share solutions to veterans-related issues, do personal interactions, and timely communications. Perhaps not a better time to honor all who served and so that we never forget.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion?
I think it's a great idea.
Thank you, Commissioner Sandelli, for bringing this up, and I think we've all been talking to the different members of the group and look forward to their involvement and hope we can help them. Looking forward to it.
Thank you for your support.
I'll open up for a public comment.
Commissioners, Steve Eppkins. I'm the Chair of the Committee to Reestablish the Lee County Veterans Advisory Council, and on behalf of the 55,000 veterans that reside in Lee County, we thank you for taking this initiative, and we look for the resolution that will make our council official, and we thank you for what you're doing and for the service that you all provide, all of us in Lee County. So thank you very much, and we salute you.
Good morning, Tara Jenner. As a tenured veteran, I'd like to express my thanks to all the community events and organizations in Lee County that have been diligently working to better the lives of our veterans and those that are currently serving. I would like to say, just from a historical perspective, I've been in Lee County for 22 years, and it is only since we've been working on trying to revive the Veterans Advisory Council that I even became aware of about, I would say, 80% of the services available to the Lee County veterans. And because of that, I do definitely strongly support this initiative on bringing back the Veterans Advisory Council to give a one-stop shop where veterans can go and then they can be parsed out to the various organizations that currently exist that will best be able to meet their needs and service their benefits. The biggest problem we often have is we don't even know what question to ask in order to find out that there's an answer there for us. And so, looking back historically, there was a Veterans Advisory Council, and I do believe that we have pinpointed that the reason that it kind of became defunct was that the members on that council were not veterans themselves, and therefore, there was not as strong an impetus to attend those meetings and have a quorum and be able to meet the needs. The council was originally designed to serve as a purpose. So we think we might have resolved that problem with the makeup of the proposed council members, and we look forward to seeing that the county Commissioners support us with this. Thank you so much.
Any other public comment? Close public comment?
Okay.
We need direction, obviously, to let staff move forward with this.
I'd like to send us back to staff, you know, to develop a resolution and bring it back to us.
I have a second. I have a second by Commissioner Penegras. I've had public comment. Any other discussion amongst us? Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Commissioner Sandelli. Thank you all for your comments. Greatly appreciated. Commissioner Penegras?
Good morning. Thank you. So here we are, 15 months after the hurricane. We're still dealing with the wrath of the hurricane that would last six hours here. So I'd like to bring up something this morning. So as businesses rebuilt here in Lee County from the hurricane, homes rebuilt, some people are really left behind. They're the last ones that actually get funding and get rebuilt is because one of some of our chambers is obviously affected by this. I've learned recently how the Sample Chamber Visitor Center and the Fort Myers Beach Chamber, obviously, they lost their membership because the business not being rebuilt. So I was looking to see, to have, and I also brought some information here to share with the Board members. This is provided by their CEO and the Board members from the Sample Chamber, of their numbers, what they'd done before, post, and pre-hurricane, what the numbers are. If you see those numbers, it's really, we drive by there every day. If you go to Little Sample, you go there to visit, but as they're not a non-visitor, you don't realize how many visitors go to the visitor center on Sample and how much resource they provide to us. So my ask today is, is a simple motion of would like to discuss, I have a motion to receive details of funding requests from Sample Captiva Chamber of Commerce Visitor Center and the Fort Myers Beach Chamber of Commerce to ask the County Attorney's Office for an opinion to whether those funding requests are eligible for tourist development tax funding, prosecutorially. And so, do like a year-by-year basis to see what we can do to help these chambers because they lost pretty much most of their staff. Visitors are starting to come back, as we see, based upon traffic, but they don't have the membership to pay and to keep these doors open to these chambers. I'm going to see if there's anything that qualifies for TDC. We were hoping early on, the CARES Fund, any money would help, and we, our per fund money wasn't qualified for us. We're hoping that since the visitor center is for the chamber and what they do with tourism would be qualified. So my ask to the Board is, or motion to see, to direct staff to see if there's anything prosecutorial we could use TDC funds for.
Commissioner Sandelli?
I think what's also important is with the depleted staff, it's made a charge, but if, as we find out how, what we can use these funds for, it's actually the events that brings a community together, that raises money, and that money is what pays for staff in many ways and stuff in the events. So there's multi uses, you know, potentially this money could be used.
I'm hoping it would market with the TDC. We'll talk about this and TDC in the future about that. It's the money for the marketing, if it's statutory, allowed to be used for that, and that's why the ask is to have the Attorney's Office see what money could be qualified to use for the chambers.
Right. I just think, you know, and that's obviously the right way to do it. I'm just saying that I deal with the chambers all the time, especially in Fort Myers Beach. I know the pressures around her. The other thing, though, I think see anomaly is that those events bring the community together and rebuilding communities as much as support this whole construction.
The people are coming back here. Already done with the traffic.
They're here.
They're coming back to Sanibel, and there's really no one from the talk to right now because of that. So that's my motion.
Any comment? Any other comment?
I, you know, I mean, I certainly feel for the chambers. I think this would set a new precedent, you know? I think I'd be interested to see how, what the actual request is. This is really vague and nonspecific, so I'm not opposed to hearing it. I'd love to hear what the specific request is that we're asking for. What is our, so what are we going to dedicate taxpayer dollars to, to support these nonprofits? And, you know, what is the money going to be used for? How's it going to be used? Is it going to be a grant? Is it going to be a loan? Is it going to be, you know, I just need more specifics, but, you know, I'm not opposed to getting those specifics.
That's all the ask is, to see what money could be used for and what monies are needed for either staffing, for materials, or operational costs. And that's what their opinion is going to be from the Attorney's Office, whether money can be used for. It would obviously come back to us to see if something is qualified for that.
I mean, that was my first question is, you know, because we have to, serving as a Chair of TDC, there are many things when we look at grants that we do every year for even beach and shoreline projects, we have to make a legislative finding if that's even something that could be used for those dollars or paid for by those dollars. And so, you know, I think, I think all of those questions need to be answered before, you know, I could, I could vote on that. Yeah.
I'm glad you all had an opportunity to weigh in. I certainly, you know, appreciate Commissioner Penegras, you bringing this forward. It's definitely needed. I want to be fair. I obviously want to be understanding that we have many chambers here, but obviously, as a result of the damage that Sanibel sustained, as well as Fort Myers Beach, we certainly owe it to ourselves to look at an enterprise fund like the TDC to see what opportunities we may or may not have, at least we'll understand what tools we have available to us, and then we can deploy them. Also, would like to remind everyone that there's $60 million in reserves in the TDC. So if this could obviously do and utilize it in the most effective way to obviously continue to have tourists coming back, I certainly would be more than open than that and certainly very favor of moving forward with this. So Commissioner Penegras, I do appreciate your item you brought up. I'll take items from the public. Any public comment?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Callie Johnson. I am the Sample Captiva Chamber Board Chair. John, regrettably, is unable to make it today. He's advocating for our community in Tallahassee and sends his regards. We're doing more with less as a chamber, but as you all know, our advocacy is more invaluable than ever. I want to share some highlights from our work since Hurricane Ian with you. We've distributed $1 million in Lee County CARES grants throughout Lee County, which includes Cape Coral, Buckingham, right here in downtown, and yes, of course, our out islands. We have a wander map that shares all of the businesses that are open on our islands, including Fort Myers Beach, and that is an invaluable service, especially since, as you're aware, there's lots of misinformation on the internet. We've been creative with fundraising since being forced to pivot from our traditional fundraising source after Hurricane Ian. Any future funding would be utilized for the visitor center and marketing as our visitor economy rebuilds. So giving us a hand up. We're committed to the transparency required of this type of funding, and we'd be happy to share programming costs with the Commission and staff. Unprecedented actions are required when unprecedented events occur. Our main goal is reducing the time to full recovery of our entire county with your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment?
Good morning. Robbie Repstorf, President of Bank of the Islands, which is a business on the islands, and President Edison National Bank here in Fort Myers. So good morning, and thank you so much, Commissioner Penegras, for bringing this forward. It is, it is so needed. And as we all know, I won't, I won't go into a lot of numbers with you. Callie did a great job just highlighting, and you've got the numbers in front of you of the impact before Ian and after Ian. But we all know that Sanibel, Captiva, Fort Myers Beach is, especially Sanibel Captiva, is one of the greatest assets of Lee County. Fort Myers Beach is another great asset. They're just two different markets. They both need help. They need dire help. The businesses are trying their best to get their doors back open. We all know that dues are the last thing you pay. You've got to get staff in there. You've got to get your inventory in there. You've got to do the improvements to your, to your business. There's just a lot of needs. John Lai, the Chairman, is just of the chamber. If you haven't spent time with him, you should consider yourself very blessed to have someone like him in Lee County. We nearly lost him to a surrounding county, but his passion is he's not going to leave when something is in this kind of shape. He sits on the hospitality board. That million dollars Callie was talking about, he got that through his efforts of sitting on that board, came back, got a grant from the community foundation on the islands to hire a person, to do nothing but make awareness to all of our small businesses. And as she said, it's not just Cape, not just Sanibel Captiva. It reached out to Cape Coral. It reached out to other islands and businesses to get them $20,000 in their pocket to help them get their staff and get going. They're just in desperate need of dollars, and you talk about TDC. People are only going to come to the island one time. They're not going to lay on the beach all day. They've got to have businesses to go into and shop. It all goes hand in hand. It's a domino effect. We know that Sanibel brings us a lot of businesses here full-time. They relocate and they come in. So all the tentacles that spin out from this are many. Workforce is tied into this. Housing is tied into this. So please consider having some dollars somewhere in the budget to come to these chambers. They're in desperate need of it, and it is, if you know where this chamber is, it's the gateway to Sanibel. The visitor center there is unbelievable. It was having 80,000 visitors annually. Not today. They're only going to call once. They're only going to, you know, come in once. We need to get this going very quickly, and thank you very, very much.
Any other public comment?
I apologize. I have a hearing impairment, mill vocal ranges are smack dab in the middle of it. Was this for general public comment or exclusively on this topic?
This is for this specific topic.
That's what I wanted to clarify. Thank you. I apologize.
I appreciate, any other public comment? I'm going to close public comment. I appreciate, obviously, Commissioner Penegras, you bringing this forward. I certainly am supportive of this. I do think it's important for people to understand, this is coming from an enterprise fund. This is going to come from the TDC. There's specific limitations, as Commissioner Penegras had indicated. We need to go through a legislative finding. We need to then obviously allow the opportunity, if that is what is and was, isn't qualifying to meet the legislative requirement in this. So it is an enterprise fund. I just want to make sure for clarity purposes, I don't want anyone to think that it's actually coming from a general fund, it's coming from the enterprise fund. So I just want some clarity for that record. I don't want anyone to think that we're using taxpayer dollars. This is an enterprise fund coming from a different source. I just wanted that clarity for the record.
Mr. Chairman, if I may? So one scenario that I understand that we're talking about here is tourist development tax dollars, right? Tourist development tax dollars come to us because people stay in hotels.
Correct.
And when they, it's a stay in hotels, they spend an extra 5% above the sales tax.
Correct.
Of the tourist development bed tax, we call it. And so that money, 56% of it, is supposed to go towards marketing to bring more tourists down. Having some experience in the chamber world, I certainly know that the calls come in. Many tourists, actually, when they're looking to visit an area, the calls come directly into the Chamber of Commerce to ask, what's, what's the weather look like? How's the area doing rebuilt? And I think the chambers provide an extremely valuable service. You know, I could certainly foresee a scenario where marketing dollars support the, the visitor center function, right? Because that's, that's a government service that instead of us building government-funded visitor centers, we could just contract with somebody who already has a visitor center out there, who's already performing that function, if that function is, is, you know, a worthwhile function. So I think that's certainly something that's understandable and a fair request to ask. I do think, obviously, we've got to run the traps on it, find out if it's legal to do all that. You know, one caution that I have for the chambers is, you know, chambers have always been accused of being government entities, and it does kind of make it hard sometimes to be an independent advocate for the business community when it also looks like you're a government-funded entity. And so I think those are the trade-offs that as a leader of the chamber, you have to real, you know, you have to look at and evaluate, and it's also a trade-off, too, that we have to evaluate. You know, we have to recognize that they're, because they are an association of businesses whose job is to advocate for the business community back to the local governments and state governments. That's what John's doing right now. There could be a scenario in the future where, again, they could come and advocate on a different topic, you know, for or against that topic. So just, just again, I think any decision we make up here is elected representatives of the people. You just, you want to look at all the trade-offs before you jump into it. That's, and that's my hesitancy or whatever it might seem like it is. That's just my caveat. There you go.
I appreciate your, your comments. I, I think we'll certainly go through that aspect. I think we'll do the due diligence necessary. I commend Commissioner Penegras for bringing it forward, and I do believe in the bucket you've identified, Commissioner Hammond, it will be in the marketing aspect. We'll have to make sure there's a legislative finding. You know, TDCs are very specific beach and shorelines and attractions, so there's not going to be a lot of flexibility in what particular bucket. And again, the devil will be in the details as you present them to us, and we understand where they are. Maybe there might be some items in marketing that seems to be fair. There might be something in attractions. I don't know, and I'm not necessarily going to advocate one way or another. And fundamentally, I am very much in favor of doing this. The other issue that we have to keep in mind is that you have to invest dollars, you know, in the marketing aspect, and the, the chamber does a great job having governed there for 13 years. I could assure you, they are directly tied, in my opinion, with bringing people in, having heads and beds. There's no doubt in my mind that they do that. They satisfy that. That'll be pretty clear to do so. But Commissioner Penegras, thanks a lot for bringing it up. Yes.
Just one more comment. I realize, and I agree with everything we said here, two things. One is timing is very important. The second thing is I hope, as we do with everything within the county, we're all in this together. And so, I hope people can approach it as, in that light.
I, I think that's a great point. You know, Commissioner Penegras, do you have a timeline you'd like to see this come back? Next meeting?
If we get a second here today and this passes, then I will get with the chambers and our county attorney's office and stuff, a meeting in the next few weeks to discuss what their needs and wants are, so they have, attorney's office knows what their needs are and what the money would be used for, and look at it one, you know, one, one year at a time.
Correct.
To see how far we do, so.
I, I agree with your comments. I mean, honestly, it's one year at a time. I'm just trying to make sure we move, as Commissioner Sandelli indicated, expeditiously as we can. Time is the best.
In the next week or so, based upon everybody's schedule.
Okay, great.
I'll, I'll second your motion.
Okay. We have a motion. We have a second. Any other public comment? I've closed that. Any other discussion? Any objections? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
If we could just stay, since I'm chair in the meeting, we'll go in the order of norm. So, Commissioner Hammond, would you mind presenting your item? And I'll go last.
Yeah. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, colleagues, so because of the sunshine law, I can't come down to your offices and talk to you about an idea that I have behind the scenes or privately. The sunshine law says that if there's anything that we ever want to talk to our colleagues about that we might have to vote on, we got to do it in public at the meeting right here. So, following that process, I put it on the, the agenda, the recap, that I'd love to informally walk into your office here, so to speak, and float an idea past you to see if it's something you're interested in. I was, I was impressed by what Governor DeSantis did in the wake of Hurricane Ian. You know, we all remember what we felt the moment we saw the damage that was done to the Sanibel Causeway Bridge. And I think we all remember the early conversations where we were really worried that it might be years before we were driving on that bridge again. And to see it open in like two weeks, I mean, it was definitely less than a month, thanks to the historic effort. I mean, I think it was truly historic effort of the governor and the state agencies that worked under him. I was so impressed that day. I said, man, we need to name this bridge after him someday. Truly did. And it's an idea that I've been holding on to because I didn't want it to be political. I didn't want it to be during a presidential campaign or anything like that. But now that that seems to be over, and it just truly seems like it's an opportunity for us to thank the governor of our state who, you know, gave a great effort, a truly historic effort, I wanted to float that idea of how do we recognize him? My initial thought was, we could call it the Ron DeSantis Sanibel Causeway Bridge. There may be an idea that you guys find better or different, but consider this, me floating one out there and seeing if you're interested in it. Today was just the start of the conversation, not looking for any final decisions today, really just looking for an ability to have a, a conversation in the sunshine with you all about it.
Thank you for bringing this up, Commissioner Hammond. I remember you saying that to him that day. We're, I think we're out there that day, and it was, and I remember that very vivid. It was three weeks later, and we, we all think we fear that we would never get the bridge open. And you're right. If it wasn't for him taking every resource in the state of Florida and bringing it here, that bridge would, wouldn't have been open. And I think we definitely, definitely have to recognize his efforts. But I want to, I'm glad you brought this up because there's a lot of things that happened because, if I remember right, four days after the hurricane, he, with his efforts, did the Mattel Shae Bridge. So, I don't know if it's for recognition. It doesn't matter, but I'm going to throw it out there, too. Like you said, we can all talk about different scenarios here. Mattel Shae Bridge goes Lee County to Lee County. There was no other municipality attached to it. That bridge was done in four days. That was very, that was amazing, too. Lot of effort went in that, the Samuel Bridge. And then another thing that I think of, because I remember you talking before about, we did the parks on the, Samuel Causeway, about when there was your family and cars parking next to you. Remember talking about the kids playing there?
Yeah.
But I think Governor DeSantis, I think Governor DeSantis is a, not only is he a great governor, but I think he was a family man. And I'm thinking, what would he be like for him to be there with his kids 10 years from now? And what are the positions he's in? And those parks on the Long, the Causeway is named after him. I don't know, I don't know how the parks are named. I think they're islands A, B, and C. I mean, do we name, could we name a parks, those parks after him? Being the county parks, it's not, it deals with the, and then, and I'm just making sure we do everything like, kind of like the TDC. I remember a few years ago, we had a scenario, we had a bridge in Lee County that was named after a person that was still alive, and the state says, um, we're not going to fund the overpass over, I said, five, you got to name the bridge after somebody that's still alive, so you're on your own in that part of the maintenance. And we renamed the bridge because we thought it was the right thing to do, and we know every time you do that, there's fallback on it. So, pushback. So, definitely, we definitely want to recognize the governor and what he did, because you stood, you're right, that, he took every, every crew in the staff order from FDOT and brought them here. We were all there that day, and it was the most amazing thing ever. It shows what you, you know, government can work, just get the permitting, the bureaucracy out of the way. It can be done. So, I think we have to do, we need to do something to recognize them, but, you know, what is it? And that's why we're, I'm glad we're having this discussion.
Well, first of all, I, my son is a company at West. They build infrastructure, and we've talked a lot about this, what's happening. He just couldn't believe it. So, I think we're all very impressed and thankful. I do think there's probably a variety of different opinions and thoughts, and I would like to have those vetted, whether it's in sunshine here with us or certainly from the communities. I think there's a lot of sensitivities there, and I think there's alternatives. So, I'd be open personally to some sort of recognition, whether this is the right one or not. I feel like all of us would like more time to think about that. But thank you for bringing it up, and I think we'll always be thankful that we were connected very soon.
I thank you, Commissioner Hammond. Listen, there's no doubt in our mind that this governor did things that continue to amaze us through this whole recovery. I think Commissioner Penegras brings up some valid points from Mattel Shae. You know, Sanibel, you know, it might be a little bit more awkward. You know, I come from, you know, a different part of the world where we seem to name things when someone passes. It just seems to be the appropriate time to do that. Again, I don't know if that's Florida, although I don't know much about it, but I do believe as a governing board, we certainly need to recognize what the governor did for us. What's the most appropriate thing to do? I'm not necessarily certain, but I'm more than open to having a subsequent conversation. I also would, you know, love the opportunity to have our other colleague as well to kind of just talk about options. So, it might be a discussion and then some direction to staff at some point in the future, but I think it's worthwhile to have a discussion sometime in the future about this. I'm more than open to do that. Does that make sense?
Yeah. My thing is also, like I said, Mattel Shae, at least it goes Lee County to Lee County, where Samuel, it does connect to the city of Sanibel. And, you know, here's the different opinions from that side, and I'm, I'm trying to build bridges here right now. We're trying to, we, we're trying to build some bridges here. We're trying to, you know, work with Samuel Captiva. It's been a long year with some of the issues with the hurricane recovery and some other issues going on Captiva. And I just like, I want everybody to be on board. I want everybody to say, yes, it's a great thing. Everybody to, you know, brace this, love to have the governor there. We do like a rebuilding of the bridge, park, whatever it may be, toll booth, whatever it may be, and say, you know, we're all here, everybody's happy, everybody wants to think. I'd much rather go through that than what we've gone through in the past before. I mean, it's just trying to find the right thing. So, again, thank you for bringing this up because we do definitely need to do something, and love to have Samuel's support on this and everybody on the islands.
And maybe the timing would be better when he, when he leaves office, when he terms out, as opposed to now when he's actively in there. I, I don't know. You know, that's why, that's why, like I said, I wanted to have the conversation and talk about it, see what y'all are, are interested in doing. You know, I, I too wanted it to be a positive thing for the community, didn't want it to be, I would be, I would be surprised, you know, and I did, I did get a chance to talk, and I think this is probably how the media found out about it. I reached out to Dana Souza, the Sanibel City Manager, talked to every member of the, including Mayor Johnson, you know, talked to Mike Miller, talked to John Henshaw and Holly Smith. And initially, all of them were supportive. Holly Smith did call me yesterday and said she wanted to take a pause on her support of it. I don't know, you know, what, she has her own reasons, and I'll let her explain those. But, you know, all the other ones still seem to be very supportive of the idea. But again, you want it to be a thank you when you do it, not something that could be controversial. So, you know, the timing is, is maybe later or something different. I'm open to that. But again, like I said, we can't talk about something we might vote on without me bringing it up publicly, so that's what I wanted to do today.
You were saying about the end of its term, but when's the actual bridge completion going to be done? Does anybody have an update on that, when the actual bridge construction is going to be completed from the FDOT? Does Rob know? I'm just curious, it's a thought, because I never really thought about it. It's like, well, we do this when the bridge is done, or you do it during construction? I'm just, I don't know, I don't know how far along they are, and I know some people out there probably more. I have been out there like in three weeks, so, I was like, the last time, three weeks ago, they were still replacing slabs of the current bridge, pouring concrete.
I believe that dates September, but I'm going to ask Mr.
Of this year?
Yes.
Okay. So, we have till, if we need it.
Good morning, Commissioners. Rob Price with DOT. The, the project should be going through the end of this year, November, December timeframe. We should be done.
So, Rob, we're talking bridge, we're talking islands, we're talking completely done, all pieces, all aspects. We talked about structured parking. I'm just trying to understand.
We're talking about the roadway improvements, everything in the right of way.
Okay.
Islands, we're working through with facilities and getting a plan together for the islands. There's some work that's going to be happening on the islands to grade out all the material that was dredged and establish some drainage and, and the elevations there. So, there will be some work happening on the islands, but it won't be a finished product until the facilities project comes through.
And then Mattel Shae?
Mattel Shae is, we're starting the Little Pine Island Bridge this summer. They're working on the roadway area there where they drove the sheet piles in, in between those two areas. We expect to have the Little Pine Island Bridge down to one lane, starting in like June of this year, with anticipating having, having it reopened to two-way traffic come October, because they go out there. And then they'll be working on the other half of the bridge while we'll be able to maintain traffic on Little Pine Island Bridge.
I appreciate that, you know, and honestly, as a result of that information, maybe perhaps as we have both bridges done, you know, maybe it's a park, maybe it's whatever, but I think as we, you know, obviously can visualize what's done, we could have a, a more robust. And the other good thing about it is it won't seem as political driven, some people may say it. We're, we're doing it for politic purposes. So, the bridge is done, we could look at options, we could look at parks, we could look at all opportunities. It's a little bit further down the road, so I think that might be safer. That's just my two cents.
I just know if I lived on Samuel Captiva, I would have definitely appreciated what I got, because we all know how long it would take to replace that bridge under normal conditions. And as Bob is a homeowner, a business owner, there's a few here in the audience, in the X, Y, and Z, knowing that bridge is gone, that was just devastating, knowing you couldn't get into your home for the year or two. So, I think that would be, for me, the perfect vision would be, we have like a great Lee County Day, have him casing the kids out there, have a big celebration with Sanibel and with Lee County, and celebrate the, the bridge rebuilt and was more resilient than when the old bridge was going to be now, and hope it never happens again.
That was exactly my thought, too. Very much like, you know, Six Mile Cypress Parkway is named Ben C. Pratt Six Mile Cypress Parkway. Everybody still calls it Six Mile Cypress Parkway, but you, but you did something to recognize the effort that was put forward there by that person. You know, same thing, it would, it would still be probably the Sanibel Causeway, as everybody would just refer to, but it would have a sign there that would certainly recognize the historic moment that happened. I can tell you, I was born and raised here. I've lived here my entire life, and this was probably one of the top five most historic moments in the history of the county, definitely the most in my lifetime, and I thought it needed to be recognized, and, and that was it, not, not for any political reasons. But I understand in today's like social media-driven world why people would definitely go there first. So, what I'm hearing from you guys is maybe bring it back later this year as things start to wrap up, construction starts to wrap up. Is that, am I hearing it right?
That's great.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. I do have one public comment card about bridge.
Thank you.
Want to make sure I recognize you.
You appreciate it. Marsha Ellis for the record. So, I'm going to point out that on November 18th of 2022, Dr. Fred Blochshire of the Florida Atlantic University Center for Water Resiliency and Risk Reduction, he did an interview with Local News 10. And in that, he stated that the Sanibel Bridge failures were due to the construction of the seawalls as well as the approaches to the bridge, stating that what was needed were true sheet pilings and that they start putting in GeoGrid so the water doesn't get in there, that they're designed to allow the material to move. He then went on to note how quickly the bridge was repaired and to understand that these are temporary fixes. And in my mind, the best way to, to honor Governor DeSantis is to make sure that we have plenty of GeoGrid on hand and other GeoTextiles, so that if we're ever in a situation like this again in the future, and we're having to immediately haul filled material out there, that we can get those GeoGrids in place and those Textiles to make a more permanent fix. Understand that there was like a great deal of urgency, but just even a simple step like that, and having the opportunity to reflect backward and say, hey, this is something that we can do. We can make sure we've got this material on hand, we can make sure that people are trained to, to get it in there whenever we're having to replace all of this erosion, so that we have a more permanent fix and don't inconvenience people twice. So, thank you for bringing this forward, Commissioner Hammond. I think it's an important conversation.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment? I'll close that. You have a great discussion. Appreciate Commissioner Hammond, you bring it up in discussion. We'll certainly look forward to having a discussion a little bit later in the year. Any other items?
Nope. None for me.
Okay. Last item, I'll certainly cover Tallahassee, really for everyone's own edification. Certainly went up there, Commissioner Hammond was, was with me. It's a different funding environment, that's for sure. We heard loudly and clearly, as we navigated through leadership, both in the House and the Senate side, that the hope, I gather, it was simplified, is to go back to funding projects at pre-pandemic levels. Last year, there was $6.8 billion worth of projects submitted. This year, it's 7.5. The number that was initially floated around was a half a billion dollars for potential funding. I think the Senate certainly is much more flexible. The good news is our projects are alive. The most important thing in the process we go through is to make sure that the items on our legislative agenda are in the budget. You don't necessarily get too concerned about the dollar amount right now. The dollar amount will take place. So, the process is make sure it gets in the budget, let the Senate and the House go through their process, and they'll do a reconciliation and ultimately fund something. It's just going to be a much different funding environment than we've ever experienced. I think a lot more aspects of this and a lot of discussion. I think as you try to go back to pre-pandemic days, I think that step is a big step to do, and I think it'll probably be one where they'll likely walk downstairs as opposed to go from seven and a half billion to a half a billion in one year. I think that'll be difficult. The good news is that we were well-received in all of our meetings. I was very appreciative that leadership on both sides had time for us and gave us times. Again, I'll give kudos to our lobbyists to allow us and, and give us the appointments necessary to do so. I'm going to continue to play in the role that I have and continue to go to, obviously up to Tallahassee, to continue to reinforce what our needs are. I think the only thing that I'm trying to resonate, I think, this conversation was, the storm came very, very quickly. Did we have all our projects identified? Absolutely not. Are there projects that we certainly didn't think about or whatever? And I just think that, and hope that the legislature understands that the devastation we went through at $50 billion is catastrophic, and if there's some items that we potentially missed from last year's budget, that there's additional consideration that's given, that's additional consideration that's given, that's a little bit different than others. We're, the one thing that I'm very proud of and wanted to make sure legislators understand, we are obviously recovering at a, a level that is driving sales tax at unprecedented levels. So our remittance of sales tax, I think is really duly and important to note that what we're doing, because honestly, the investment they're making in these projects obviously are really a great return on investment. And the way to measure that is the sales tax that we're collecting. So obviously, in my opinion, the more recovery dollars, the more sales tax and obviously better for our county. So that's really the only issue that I wanted to bring up and give everyone a, an indication that funding and as it goes out later in the year, it's just gonna be a little bit different, dramatically different, not a little different, dramatically different than what we've experienced in the past. So that's my report. I'm all done with my. Committee appointments. Commissioner Hammond?
I have none today, Mr. Jim.
I have none.
Mr. Sandelli?
I have one. And since I find it here.
First of all, I wanna thank both you and Mr. Hammond for going up there and to, what's always interesting to me is as we go through the rebuild process and we talk so much about that, we're also going through continued growth within our county, within our state. And so we have the duality of meeting those challenges and stuff like this. Hang in for just one second. I'll bring it back if you have any.
Okay. I, I'll bring, I, I do have committee appointments. First from Cherry Estates, I have Benjamin Shepard, Peter Henry, and Nancy Groban.
Move approval.
Second. I have a motion, a second. Anyone opposed, any public comment? Motion passes. And I have one other person, Derek Fisher, I'm sorry, Felder from Bike and Pedestrian Committee.
Move approval.
Second. Any objection? Public comment? Great, that passes. Commissioner Sandelli?
I have one reappointment, Anthony Luna, for the Harlem Heights Street Lighting Unit.
Second.
Motion's a second. Any discussion? Any public comment? Motion carries unanimously. County manager.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I have, we have two items today and I'd like to ask Mr. Sawyer to present both of those.
Thank you, Commissioners. We are asking you to authorize the chair or vice chair to send support letters to Congressman Donalds for the fiscal year 25, community project funding requests that we're making. And just as a recap, that's $2 million for new mobile response units, $9.2 million to construct an EMS regional facility in Cape Coral, $15 million for the Fort Myers Beach Water Reclamation Facility that we discussed earlier in the meeting, and $10 million for Lee County Utilities, North Lee County Well Field Expansion Project.
Need a motion for that?
Please.
You need a motion for that?
Yes, please.
I move the item.
Motion's a second. Any public comment on that item? Saying no, not closed public comment. Any other discussion? Any objection? Motion carries unanimously. And then number two?
Yes, sir, thank you. And then the second item is the update on the Lee Cares Housing Assistance Update. So you'll remember that applications opened February 1st. Thus far, our outreach teams have been to more than 12,000 households. We've engaged hundreds of more, of people at six community events thus far and we have them scheduled through the rest of the month. I want to remind people watching that they can apply for housing assistance via phone app, over the web. They can make a phone call to our case managers or they can visit one of these centers that are on your screen in person and get assistance directly to fill out the applications. The Lee Cares Outreach Center on Gladiolus is open five days a week and these other sites spread throughout the county are one day a week each and you can see the dates that, that they'll be open. If those continue to see traffic, we will of course extend the days and times of, of those other areas as well. Thank you.
No direction you need, right?
No, sir.
Okay. Information purpose is great. Any other items, county manager? County attorney?
None for us today, thank you.
Go back to, obviously, public comments. I have two cards, one Karen Woodson. Welcome, Councilwoman.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it. I appreciate being here this morning and I am Karen Woodson. I am the Councilwoman for Fort My- Town Fort Myers Beach. I'm here to talk about our pier. And just as we heard this morning, that the local chambers are a vital part of tourism and rebuild, so is our pier. When we look at the tourism numbers, we're over four and a half million tourists that come to Lee County and about 1.7 million of those people come to the Fort Myers Beach Pier. This process was originally initiated by a citizen group called Let's Go FMB. And they did presentations, I think most of you have seen the presentation. But what really happened too is I know that we wanted to hear from constituents, from tourists, from people across the country. So we put together a survey and had almost 10,000 respondents from that survey. And what came out of that is 98% average of building back a bitter, bigger, better pier. And so what does that look like? And why do we do this? One of the reasons, a huge reason, is economic revitalization, inspiration and excitement that exists about the pier. It is the number one tourist attraction in Lee County. Excuse me. It replaces a historic landmark that has been there for 40, 50 years. We need increased safety for swimmers, boaters, and tourism activities. And by building it longer, building it wider, this would provide that. And of course, to fish. That's one of the main things. So I look at the piers around the state and we truly have second or third smallest pier in the state. We're not asking for St. Pete, St. Pete Beach Pier, that's 3,000 feet. But Pensacola is 1,471, Panama City 1,500, Navar Beach 1,545. We're looking at about 1,000 feet and maybe 16 feet wide from the eight foot that it is now. So that leads me to the resolution, Resolution Number 2416. A resolution by the Town Council of the Town of Fort Myers Beach, Florida, encouraging and providing support to the Lee County Board of County Commission to consider enhancements when rebuilding the pier located on Astero Island in order to build back a better and bolder facility for the enjoyment of the public and economic benefit to the community and providing an effective date. So I would like to submit that. Thank you. So thank you. I hope that we can talk further about this. I know that there's meetings, further meetings coming up and we really would like to be involved in this process. Thanks.
Next public comment is Danny Ballard.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Danny Ballard and I'm representing the North Fort Myers Civic Association. If you remember, about this time last year, I started talking about wanting to have a pickleball tournament in the Lee Civic Center. Had to wait until Lee County took it over to proceed. We had a date, been out there numerous times and looked at it. The way the floor is laid out with the cracks in it, expansion joints as you would call them, it's not conducive for doing a pickleball tournament. We looked into having a company that leases a temporary floor, bring it in, that's about three grand. And I have worked with the, the county Parks and Rec staff to look at possibly not charging us the $1,500 to use the facility, but then have to buy nets, it's 800. So, you know, I, I gotta make about 5,000, I gotta spend about $5,000 and the best I could see that we could put in there, we'd only make $6,000. So it's almost a moot point. We went out, looked at the tinsel pavilion, same problem there, the way the floors were paved, poured with expansion joints. So the county does have another facility and it's, it's Brooks Park, there's 12 pickleball courts, but right now the county has, they don't have a provision for an outside group to come in and have a tournament. So what I'm asking is if there is a way to do that one-day tournament, not use all 12 courts, if I had six courts or eight courts, then the civic could, could make some money and we was using this as a fundraiser. Or if that's not possible, is it possible to put four pickleball courts at North Fort Myers Community Park and four at Hancock? I do think they're trying to turn some of the tennis courts at Hancock into pickleball courts. There are indoor pickleball courts there, but they are all played so heavily, it's almost impossible to get that day. So I'm just asking to see if there's something that can be done. I know it's, it's gonna be maybe not done until next year and I'm, I'm good with that. But we need more pickleball courts. It is the hottest sport in the United States of America today. Thank you and look forward to being able to have a tournament.
I don't have any other cards. Anyone else for public comment? Yes. Tara, come on up. Anyone else after Tara, raise their hand? Okay.
Good morning, Tara Jenner. I'm here on behalf of the Lee County Republican Party. The executive committee met previously and we passed a resolution. I spoke with several of you in anticipation of that resolution being presented to the REC and it's in reference to a proposed ordinance designating Lee County as a Bill of Rights Sanctuary County. I know it sounds kinda strange because basically what we're doing is we're asking the county to affirm that we stand behind the Bill of Rights and our Constitution. And while it seems a little redundant, looking past in, during the pandemic, we had a number of organizations and entities in Lee County that actually abridged the rights of the individuals by relying upon organizations and entities like the CDC who passed mandates. And unfortunately, both many of our elected officials as well as our public were not aware of what their rights and limitations were when it came to that. And so what I wanted to do today was just bring this to your attention again. We will be formally presenting each of the council members, the committee members, the resolution as well as the proposed ordinance and pass that through also through your attorneys for review. This particular ordinance and a similar resolution was actually presented down in Collier County and they have adopted it. I know that just because they did it, doesn't mean we should. But again, this is more of an educational tool and also a, just because we need to get out there and make sure that all our elected officials know what their limitations and responsibilities are and reaffirm our community that they have rights that are given by God, not by government, that cannot be abridged no matter what it's called by any organization. Anyway, I just wanted to give you an update and let you know that that would be forthcoming. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll ask any other public comment? I'll close public comment. Listen, I appreciate everyone getting together today. Councilwoman Woodson, I'm very much in favor of staff working with you and I know the bridges, the pier is something you wanna work with. I think we have limitations on what we can and can't do, but more than open to, to honor your Fort Myers Beach and request just from that. I can't say it to anyone obviously other than up here, so that's why I just wanted to put for the record. Any other comments before us? I'll call from the German. Thank you all.